I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, physical, liberty, and justice for all.
Please stand, and I ask for a moment of silence for the victims of Uvali, Texas. Thank you.
Alderman Tobin. Alderman Jean-François.
Here.
Alderman Johnson.
Here.
Elder woman Ram Cassoun.
Here.
Alderman Kleiner.
Here.
Alderman Green.
Here.
Alderman Witt.
Here.
Alderman Massey.
Here.
President Rodriguez.
Here.
Quorum is present.
Approval minutes?
We have the minutes of May 3rd.
Motion by Alderman Massey, second by Alderman Green, all in favor?
Aye.
Correspondence?
We have two this evening. We have a letter from Northern Academy of the Arts. Dear Mayor DeStefano and the Common Council, the Northern Academy would like to formally and sincerely express our gratitude for the diligence of your Department of Public Works. Recently, Brian Smith was driving through our campus and noticed some of our street lamps had gone out over the past winter. The next day, he came back to the campus with Mr. Twill to take a closer look at the situation. All the lights that were out were fixed in a very short period of time, making our campus a much safer environment. With all the various multifaceted projects going on in our city, it meant the world to us that this project was completed in such a quick and efficient manner. Once again, we thank them for their hard work. Sincerely, Dr. Marilyn Torley, Principal.
Received and filed.
We also have a side letter agreement between the city and the CSEA in reference to the animal control officer position.
Received and filed.
That concludes communications.
For the goodness of the city, anyone who would like to address the council, please step forward.
Hello, the three of us are here, please excuse my laryngitis, from the warming station coordinating committee, from the Greater Middletown Interfaith Council. Michelle Duggan is our co-chair. I'm co-chair, and Matt is our building manager. We just have a presentation that we would like to give to the city. To the City of Middletown, words are not enough to express our thanks to all of you for all you have done for our homeless guests at the Middletown Warming Station. Since the pandemic hit, everything changed. We could no longer have our guests at St. Paul's because we did not have room to socially distance. Temple Sinai graciously gave us the use of their basement for a season. We looked everywhere we thought feasible for a space, but thanks to Mayor Joe, Maria, Mike, and the city council and staff. Eight to 10 Mulberry Street was renovated, and the GMIC Warming Station now has a permanent home. We spent our first season there this year from November 21st, 2021, through April 7th, 2022, and it truly became a home to those who needed a safe, warm place to stay, and they didn't have to walk down into a basement to go to bed. Well over 2,700 beds were used this season, and the folks who slept on them also had a hot meal and opportunities to search with help for permanent housing, with about 15 of our guests doing that successfully this season. Because you as a city made this space available to us, we were able to help others in this undertaking. We thank you all for your continued support and assistance with this mission. Many blessings to you and yours, Marilyn Pierce, Michelle Duggan, and Matt Arrol, on behalf of the GMIC Warming Station Coordinating Committee. Thank you.
Thank you.
This is a small plaque up. Jerry, come on over here, because you're the man here.
You should be accepting this. Something to acknowledge in your support.
No, we appreciate it.
We greatly appreciate it.
All right, thank you so much. Thank you. So he's always got his camera.
And one last thing, here's our lease.
Can you prepay your lease for five years?
Yes, this is from Maria Gracia, she covered our lease for the next month.
I can't put it in my pocket.
You gotta make sure I get a receipt.
It's not reported.
Thank you so much.
Thanks so much, Joe. Thanks, Jerry.
All right, guys, thank you.
Thanks.
When Leonora comes up, you could take the fight out. Anyone else would like to address the council?
All right. Remarks of the mayor?
Well, I want to thank the three for that surprise. You know, we did move pretty quickly as a community, and, you know, we've acknowledged Jerry and Andrew's role, because they bore a lot of that during the transition period. So, and Maria and Mike Zohorechek did a great job with that, and which, as you recall, resulted in a presentation nationwide to HUD on a nationwide webinar, and then that report was then submitted to Congress, in which that project was one of the top five projects in the nation that was selected for the best use of COVID funds. So, we, I guess we did a good thing. So, moving on, I wanted to report, your Memorial Day was successful. This year, as in past couple, it's been a little confusing for people, because traditionally Middletown and Walk Hill have connected together, and we've had the Memorial Day where we march from Watts, not Watts, from the Thrall Park over to the memorial by Matty's Diner, the Vietnam Memorial. And, you know, the past couple of years, it hasn't happened, and this year, people were expecting it to happen again, but the two legions decided, and they coordinate this, not the city of Middletown or the town of Walk Hill, the two legions decide how they're going to move this along. And this year, we had a lot of disappointed people that the ceremonies were not held at Thrall Park where the monuments are. So, we appreciate all their efforts, and it was well-attended at the American Legion Post 151. I attended along with Alderman Kleiner and Alderman Massey, and we've asked, I've asked Alderman Massey to try to work with the two legions to see if we can reinstate that traditional march, or, and I know some of the reasons are that a lot of the gentlemen are, and ladies are elderly and unable to march, so we can make some kind of special accommodation. But Alderman Massey, our only veteran on the council, has been assigned with that task. I think he's done some outreach already, and hopefully for even Veterans Day or by Memorial Day next year, we'll have a different type of ceremony. O&amp;W update, I know many of you are looking for it. We did receive the schedule, and that includes the abatement of the asbestos and the preliminary design and schematic. Right now, the 100% bid package will be ready to go out in mid-October. So, there are some structural issues, temporary structural support that needs to be done, but the bid package will be ready by mid-October to go out. And I will be forwarding to the council the schedule that was presented to us at our last meeting with the engineers. Another issue, the, you may see the county health department, they have contracted with Alamoor, which is the Pest Master Services to provide an application to municipalities, the own catch basins for the larvicide, for the mosquitoes and other types of things that can grow in that and create the, a problem for certain types of diseases. So, if you see that around the city, they'll be doing it in conjunction with the city, with the Department of Public Works, but it will be a private company, so we're aware of it. And, but, if you have any questions, just contact the police department if you think somebody's doing something they shouldn't be doing, and they'll look into it. But this company is the larvicide municipality-owned catch basins will begin sometime very soon. Summer concert series, I'll let Maria brief you on that. We had our first one this past week, was well-attended, especially for the first, you know, for the first concert of the year, and we do have a schedule both for Run for Downtown Park and the John F. Degnan Square throughout, through August. The sidewalk progress, as you've seen, is happening, a few glitches here and there, but for the most part, the contractor is working with the businesses to make sure that they maintain access into the individual businesses. The sidewalks that have been installed look beautiful, and we're, Jacob can give you an update on that schedule if necessary. I know they're probably a little bit behind from the original schedule that was presented, but I believe we'll, as the weather's improved, that they'll be moving very quickly from here. One other issue is Wool Slayer Field. If you've driven by it, you have seen the concession stand, the bathrooms are now being built. The bleachers are in stock now in possession of the city. I know there's some discussions about relocating the scoreboard, I think council president, correct?
Yes.
From Watts over to, scoreboard is owned by youth football, so we will be relocating from Watts Park over to Wool Slayer Field. I've asked the parks department to start looking into some pricing for lighting, to see, you know, maybe not this year's project, but project as we move forward. Hopefully, it could be done this year, maybe, but, so as soon as those numbers come in, I'll give you, I'll make you aware of it. But the, hopefully, I know the goal was to have the field ready by July, July what?
Twenty-two.
Oh, July 22, according to Mr. Johnson, so we'll, they are moving pretty quickly. You know, there was a supply issue for a while, but it's been addressed. And lastly, tonight, I forwarded to your resume today of Rose Tuminia, Rosa, I'm sorry, it's my mother-in-law's name, so I should know that. Rosa is here? Come on up, Rosa. Leonora can come with you, too. Yeah, and I'll let Leonora introduce you, because Rosa is, there's a resolution up for her appointment tonight. You'll be getting actually, as we move further down the line, it's a little confusing, our charter, it mentions deputy treasurer in some spots, but it doesn't mention anything in another spot, so we'll be clarifying that, but we're going to have her up tonight for a vote and for the approval. You have her resume, but just let Rosa say a few words, or Leonora, if you want to introduce her.
Hi, good evening. I would like to introduce you, Rosa Tuminia. She has an extensive background in accounting, so one of my biggest things was management, being able to work with the team, being able to work with you all, and I am highly confident that she can do that, so I would greatly appreciate it if she is appointed tonight. It would be of great help to me, as I am hitting the ground running, and I'm pretty sure she will do the same.
Thank you. Thank you all for having me, and I am so thankful for the opportunity to be here, and I look forward to working with all of you. I can promise you that I can work really hard, and I will give you the best of me. Thank you very much.
Welcome. Thank you. Any question for the mayor? All right, department heads, economic development.
Good evening, everyone. It's so great to see the warming station project was successful this year, and the great work that they do, I got to see it firsthand this year, you know, from having vaccination shots, the county came in, and delivery of COVID testing. It was just very, very fulfilling to see that project come about, and, you know, I want to thank you guys for what you do as well. We look forward to many years of helping the community. As the mayor said, the summer concert series started, and a very successful first concert series, along with our farmer's market last weekend. So, we also hit the ground running, as Leonora said, getting these events up and going again. You know, we had two years with everything slowed down or not happening, so it's great to see people are coming back and supporting us, and the ribbon cuttings keep coming. We had one last week, and this week, we have two. On Thursday at 5:30, join us at the Piccolo Cucino and Vino, that's the formerly Something Suite, so they are going to have their grand opening and ribbon cutting at 5:30. And on Friday at 4 o'clock, Dash Events on the corner of Academy and Bennett Street. It's, Dulcet and Bennett, thank you. So, 4 o'clock on Friday. Then also, Top Gun did very well for us at the Paramount, we got a lot of new customers from that, and good numbers, and now we are being released out in Abbey, and then Eiffel, so those are another two great movies that are coming to our theater. And we were just filled with graduations and ceremonies that we're still doing, from SUNY Orange had ceremonies, nursing penning ceremony, convocation, Fei Tian, and Northern Academy of the Arts, New Beginnings, Toro, we have Garnet Health this week with a residency ceremony and graduation. So, as you can see, everything is moving forward. We had our CDA meeting tonight, updated you on the houses that we're working on, and one's on its way to be sold, and a couple more that we were going to get creative with CDBG funds, hopefully to stabilize and start moving those. And I think that's it for tonight.
Any question for Maria? Alderman Kleiner?
Yes, thank you. Hi, Maria. The, this year's fireworks display.
Correct.
I believe that's on July 2nd, but I look on the website, and I don't see it there anywhere, I don't see it mentioned anywhere, and I think we ought to make people aware of it ahead of time, and I'm hoping they get that side pass, but that's not your department finished by then, but.
Yes, well, I know, like I mentioned another time, we're, everything's been on Facebook, social media, but we will make sure the websites will be updated with all the events.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Anyone else? Thank you, Maria.
Thank you.
DPW Commissioner?
Before you tonight, we have several resolutions for DPW, so either I can address them now or I can wait when the vote comes. If you have any questions, maybe I should wait, so I don't make my presentation too long. I'll wait for any questions when the resolutions come out. The reservoirs, Alderman Massey, are full, at full capacity, we even had too much water, and we had to shut down some of the reservoirs because we had to treat for algae, and when we treat for algae, the reservoirs are not allowed to overflow or spill into adjacent areas, so that was an issue, but we had, we managed to deal with it, and thank God we have too much water rather than, not enough water, like California or many other places. A reminder for the people to also, our residents, to conserve water as much as you can, because it's a very limited resource. The mayor, he spoke about the curbs and sidewalks project, which is a traffic operation. Again, remind people, this is like a $30 million project, it's a major facelift for our city, restores our glorious past, and they're having granite curbs in there, very respectable-looking curbs, not just concrete curbs, and sidewalks are becoming very nice, are coming out very nice. There's going to be a landscape component to this work with trees that's going to be planted, so things are moving very well, and the contractor is not only working on downtown area, but he's also working at Ridge Street, there's a significant amount of curbs and sidewalks that have fallen, and they had tremendous drainage issues in there, so that's all being resolved, so the contractor is working over there as well, as well as throughout downtown, and work is doing very well, moving very well, like the mayor stated. Zombie or double poles, they've taken down 70 so far, 7-0, they've been eliminated. All the work associated with the traffic operations for the next three years, all the poles have been gone, out of the way, so now they're just catching up with the rest of the city. And we're very happy and thankful for Frontier, basically for that work, because it's mostly Frontier double poles. New water treatment plant pump station, we've been working on this for a long time, and tomorrow is going to be the commissioning or the startup. Hopefully, everything will go along very smoothly. It's just under $2 million, this project, to replace an old 1989 pump station for the finished water, it's an essential component of our water treatment plant and our water system, and that will be commissioned tomorrow, hopefully, and we can leave it online, assuming that everything goes well. The milling and paving, our annual milling and paving project, is, all the list is being generated, we'll be going over that with the mayor, and hopefully, we'll be starting really soon with the milling, and we'll keep you, we'll keep you posted, so that you can look for our website, for the names of the streets, and so on and so forth, again, once we clear it with the mayor and the elected officials. Frank Shorter Way, and there, just an example, when constituents talk to us, we do listen, it's not all the time people talk, say, oh, nobody does anything about it, we do listen. Many times, we do have very constructive ideas from constituents, such as Frank Shorter Way, and there, Alderman Kleiner would remind me the name of the resident who brought it to our attention?
Tony DeFazio.
Tony DeFazio, all the time, he's, you know, he's a, he's a nice resident of the city of Middletown, we don't agree on too many things, but usually, but in this one, he brought this to our attention, and we agreed with him immediately, and we started working on it. And for that, we thank him very much for his ideas and his perseverance. With that, I will conclude my remarks. If you have any questions, anybody?
Any question for Jacob? Alderman Kleiner?
Not really a question, I just wanted to say thank you to the, for Electronics Drop-Off Day, those guys were, it was pouring most of the whole day, and I saw lots of TVs and things when I went by, so.
Yeah, about 14 ballots were collected.
Wow.
Yeah, 14 of them, the truck could not, had to come back on Tuesday to pick up the rest.
Pick up the extra.
Yeah, because we had too much, but.
Very good.
Yeah, which is very good for the environment, yes. Thank you, Alderman.
Anyone else? Thank you, Jacob. It's okay, we don't bite.
Good evening, all. What, I just introduced Rosa, so I just wanted again to thank you all, if you can appoint her tonight, helped me tremendously, helped my team tremendously. Again, she has a strong background in accounting and in management, and I think she will work well with the city. Thank you.
Any questions? Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Just first wanted to say thank you for your constant support, our teen center transportation. We just put an end to that for the summer, every year. When the weather starts getting nice, the kids are outside playing basketball, instead of coming to our gym, which is not an issue, it's great that they're still playing. So, we did put a hold on the teen center transportation for now, and we are definitely going to resume that again come September. We are averaging between 10 to 12 kids a night getting bussed and shuttled to and from our facility on Wednesday night, so it definitely was a help, and it definitely gave those 10 to 12 kids every Wednesday an opportunity to get there, where otherwise, they were either taxis or trying to sneak out and walk at night. So, again, thank you for your support. July 2nd, the Party in the Park with the fireworks, the rec department's going to have a slew of events and things, activities for the kids to do, a few showcases of our breakdancing, and some of our programming that we do have. Our breakdancers have been working very hard throughout the year, and they are going to be putting on a brief show at the Party in the Park. Just a reminder, the pools open on June 27th, we're still getting the constant phone calls, and we just want to remind everybody, June 27th, we will be getting ready to start taking the covers off of the pools to get the inside and the water ready, so just a reminder again, June 27th, even when the covers come off. Summer program registration is open, all of our spring is pretty much done for now, and we are preparing for summer, and all of our registration is out and up, and it is, spots are slowly starting to fill, and we are, we are finished hiring for the summer. Maintenance update, if you've noticed, the train on County Route 78 in West Maine was painted red. It was brought to our attention that the, one of the original trains, the color was supposed to be red, so it was painted and updated, so the train is red if you haven't noticed. Our maintenance department is also doing a few more updating of rocks and everything in that area, and once those rocks are in, solar lighting will be put there to shine onto the train, and then if you pass near Tol Oaks, you'll also see that Welcome to Middletown sign also has the solar lighting, so it's visible at night as well. Happy to announce the reservoir bathroom project is complete, the bathrooms will be opening, we just called the porter potty company, and we discontinued one of the porter potties, the handicap one is going to be moved to Abertson Road and Highland Lakes parking lot. We, we're getting a lot of requests to have a bathroom in that area as well, so our handicap porter potty will be moved over there. There are still, maintenance is still going to be adding mulch to the Van Duser parking lot and finish cleaning it up, but the bathrooms will be open, and we're looking forward to hopefully having the BOSI's summer project that comes every summer and does work somewhere with us and with our maintenance department, to hopefully being at Van Duser parking lot, and John Bianchi are working for me and has a lot of ideas of expanding that picnic area, and that would be a great project for the BOSI's group to work on this summer. Kate, let you know that the Davidge Ball Field lights are pretty much all fixed, except where there is one burnt-out fixture that cannot be replaced, it's no longer made, I believe it's on the first base side, and Rotolo and John Bianchi are working together to try to get that last light replaced and fixed there. The Frank Shorter walkway, hopefully in two weeks, will be open. DPW will be coming in soon to install the new guardrails, guardrails with the openings, and our guys are in the process of just cleaning up the final brush and all the extra debris off. There's also talking about the future of expanding that walkway to continue going through that whole bend near the small shelter and the basketball court, so anyone, and actually the, all of the walking that gets done there, so they don't have to go into that road anymore, of just continuing a walking trail that will be inside of the French area, just to avoid the public walking in the road on that busy windy stretch right there. Wool Slayer Field project, the pole barn has been started. Once the framing is complete, the plumbing will be installed for the bathrooms and the kitchen sink. Fusco Engineering is in the process of designing the septic system for there. Our guys are also finishing the backfield area, there's lots of like rocks and pebbles, so they're in the process of clearing out the rest of that, and then adding topsoil and hydro seating. As the mayor said, the bleachers are in our possession, we're just waiting for once everything gets finished. We're in the process of also ordering new goalposts for there, with the, trying to secure the royal blue padding for the posts as well, so it's coming along, we're looking good, not promising that July date, but it's looking good, so far, so good. Any questions?
Any questions on Jean-François?
Yes, for us, the basketball court, do we have any plans of changing the backboards to fiberglass to give it more of that futuristic look? to give it more of that futuristic look?
Um, I did want to wait, um, once summer gets going, uh, work on just getting quotes to, a lot of our basketball courts do need to be resurfaced and a lot of the poles are outdated and do need to do updating. Um, so with getting the resurfacing, also getting quotes to see what ballpark area we would be in for hopefully submitting for some park improvements for 2023.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, thank you. City Clerk.
Good evening, everybody. Uh, Memorial Day behind us, it's, uh, important to remember that we're in prime yard sale season. Uh, you need permits in the city of Middletown to have a yard sale. Uh, they're available in the district, in the city clerk's office. It's $10, uh, with a $50 refundable deposit, uh, provided that you follow all the rules and regulations. Uh, most importantly, when you do have your yard sales, please do not post signs on any city property, any public property, telephone poles, street signs. Uh, that's the surest way to ensure that you don't get your deposit back, but we are more than happy to help you, uh, get permits set up and, uh, get your yard sale underway this summer. Also, I spoke with Eileen, uh, just a few seconds ago. The, uh, fireworks has been on the web, was put up on the website, uh, earlier, uh, earlier today, uh, so it's out there, Mr. Kleiner. Thank you.
Any question for Rick? Alrighty. In March of Alderman, Alderman-Massie.
Thank you. I'd like to thank the American Legion Post 151 for their Memorial Day ceremony. The following several days, speaking with Mayor DiStefano and President Rodriguez, we realized that we received many requests to hold that Memorial Day ceremony at Thrall Park as we have in the past. As a member of American Legion Post 151, I will make a formal request. They considered the possibility of next year changing to laying a wreath at the armory and then marching down Wickham Avenue to Thrall Park where the city will have the portable stage assembled and have the Memorial Day laying of the wreaths and the ceremony there. I will also check in, as the mayor had said, if we can get the two groups together and maybe go back to starting at, uh, Matty's Diner down to Thrall Park and reversing it if that's possible. But if that's not possible, at least go back to, uh, what I just stated. Second, I will also be asking Post 151 to assist in the Veterans Downtown Banner Program that's resurrected again. Thank you. That's it.
Alderman Witt?
Thank you very much. Um, a couple of things here. Uh, our first ward constituents meeting is tomorrow night at six o'clock, six until seven right here. Uh, we'd love to see you. The second thing is, uh, just because they were here, the Odyssey of the Mind Kids, uh, for anyone who may not have heard, they actually went on to Iowa State and ended up finishing second in the world. So out of 37 teams, so I know, uh, they came here and the, you know, I've mentioned it a couple of times about the time commitment that goes into this, but it was an incredible group. So they finished second in the world, which is pretty amazing. So, uh, Rick's niece is on that team and I'm sure she had a real good time doing that as well. And, um, thank you finally to our friends from St. Paul's for coming here tonight and, and all that you've done for so many years. You know, Matt, Michelle, Marilyn, uh, you know how much you've all done. And I know Doug, you didn't come up, but I'm sure you've had conversations at your dining room table for years on this stuff. So it's incredible, the impact it's had on this community and, um, and thank you very much.
Alderman Green?
Thank you very much. Yeah, Alderman-Massie, I would look forward to that, uh, in the, in the coming years to see the, uh, some form of a parader, throw things back for Memorial Day. That'd be great to, to see. Maria, I just want to thank you for, uh, some brownie points from my mother-in-law because she asked me the other day, what can you do to bring Dalton Abbey to the Paramount? And, uh, I said, you know, that sounds like a great movie for there and it's magically, the next day I drove by and it was on the, the marquee outside. So that was really cool to see. Um, I do want to thank the police department for putting together a great Kids' Day event and everyone who was there on Saturday. Um, my son thoroughly enjoyed it and so did all the kids. I know it started at 11, but by 10:30, the park was packed. Um, so it's always good to see everyone out there for that. Um, and again, also thank you to, uh, the warming station, uh, and the, the Interfaith Council for all you've done. Uh, certainly, you know, the city couldn't have done it without your help and cooperation as well. So, uh, it's always good to work with our, with our neighbors that way. Thank you.
Alderman-Kleiner?
Thank you. Uh, and of course, uh, thank you, Marilyn and Michelle and Matt. You, you can't believe how much work they do. It's just amazing. So I, I'm glad everything is working out and, and it's really been a blessing for the city. We'll have our second ward constituents meeting next Monday, the 13th at 7:00 PM here in City Hall. Uh, anyone's welcome. So I hope you come out for that. The Weiwei Yanda is having their draft generic environmental impact statement public hearing from their planning board. That's at, um, 80 Ridgeberry Hill Road. That is Wednesday at 7:30, uh, exactly the time of our Parks and Rec Commission meeting. So if I'm not there, you know where I am. Um, that's about the project for the Dulcet Town Road, uh, Dulcet Town Road corridor. And the, you, you just need to go on the website and read that and read what's planned for there in that wetland area. And oh my God, uh, so, uh, hopefully CDM will be there representing the city. But, um, we want to stay aware of what, of what is going on in that area, you know, so close to that busy, busy intersection and with all those wetlands. This, uh, this Sunday, uh, is, uh, June 12th will be the Ruthie Dino Run. So, uh, let's hope that goes well and goes smoothly. And, uh, I want to thank also Alderman-Massie and, and the mayor and the American Legion Post with 151. I, I thought the speaker was excellent this year. They did a wonderful job with the ceremony. But I agree that people want to be in Thrall Park. They want to lay the wreath at the monuments. They want to remember Decoration Day that way. So, uh, I certainly hope that they can work that out. Thank you.
Alderman Cassoun?
Uh, good evening. I just wanted to say to Rosa, welcome to City Hall. I'm sure we're all going to be in approval of this appointment and, you know, City Hall is a, it's a, it's a big family here and now you're a part of it. So I'm sure you're going to do fantastic. Um, uh, for Parks and Rec, I just wanted to kind of shout you out. Um, I basically live at softball and baseball fields these few months and, you know, we have been challenged by weather. The rain has been almost incessant for us, so it's hard. But the ability for the Parks guys to go out and make them playable over and over again, they've been beautiful. And, and it's just thanks to them and all your leadership there. And of course the lights and fixing the bleachers then. But, um, to the Interfaith Council, um, your work is, is unbelievable. You've been doing this for years. And, uh, what you do for the community and for the people in need and offering them a place to be safe and warm and, 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 and dignifiedly to, to, to get through the cold months. And I appreciate your work there. And I'm going to leave it at that.
Alderman Johnson?
Thank you very much. Uh, Red Train duly noted. Thank you very much. Uh, there are three resolutions on the seasoning agenda with respect to new legislation. Uh, these three items were reviewed and approved by the legislative committee earlier this evening. Will Slayer Field, carry on. Good work. I see that at least twice a day going back and forth. Zombie Poles, Commissioner, thank you very much. He's busy right now. Thanks. Warming Station, can't have too many thanks. It's been a long and winding road for sure. I think I agree with my predecessors. Your contribution to the community is really incalculable. And thank you for representing us so well. We all do appreciate that as much as your, as your patrons do, I'm sure. And Mr. Kleiner, thanks for keeping us on track with Weiwei Yanda, so near and yet so far. And I'm sure you'll keep us apprised of progress or perhaps lack thereof. Thank you very much.
Alderman Jean-François?
Yes, uh, good evening. Kudo to the, uh, warming station. And I work in Newburgh sometime at DSS and I was in there a couple of weeks ago. And there are a few folks that came in. They had the option to go to other places that's looking for, uh, uh, shelter. And for the most part, they all, they always want to pick Middletown for some reason. And, and I feel proud of that and, and, and being part of the city of Middletown and you guys are doing a great job. Thank you for what you do. And also I'd like to thank everyone that was involved with the electronic drop off the past weekend. A great effort. Thank you very much.
New business?
We have a resolution sponsored by Alderman-Massie renewing an agreement with RJ Smith Realty.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman-Massie, second by Alderman-Kleiner. A discussion. Roll.
Jean-François?
Here.
Johnson?
Aye.
Ram Cassoun? Ram Cassoun?
Sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. Kleiner?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Massie?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Carries. Resolution sponsored by Alderman-Witt, authorizing a budget transfer for emergency repairs for the air conditioners at the police station.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman-Witt, second by Alderman-Green. A discussion. Roll.
Jean-François?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Ram Cassoun?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Massie?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Motion carries. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Jean-François, authorizing an architectural engineering consultant contract for the traffic operations project.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Jean-François, second by Alderman Johnson. A discussion. Roll.
Jean-François?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Ram Cassoun?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Massie?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Carries. Resolution sponsored by Alderman-Kleiner, authorizing amendment number three and a proposal from CDM Smith.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman-Kleiner, second by Alderman Johnson. A discussion. Roll.
Jean-François?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Ram Cassoun?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Massie?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Carries. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Ram Cassoun, authorizing amendment number one and a pro, and a proposal from CDM Smith.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Ram Cassoun, second by Alderman-Kleiner. A discussion. Roll.
Jean-François?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Ram Cassoun?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Massie?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Carries. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Green, authorizing a proposal from Clark Patterson Lee for work related to a parking garage.
Resolution by Alderman Green, second by Alderman-Massie. A discussion. Roll.
Jean-François?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Ram Cassoun?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Massie?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Carries. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Johnson, accepting a $550 donation from the Middletown Little League.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Johnson, second by Alderman-Witt. A discussion. Roll.
Jean-François?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Ram Cassoun?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Massie?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Carries. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Jean-François, accepting a $900 donation from the Middletown Lions Club.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Jean-François, second by Alderman-Kleiner. A discussion. Roll.
Jean-François?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Ram Cassoun?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Massie?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Carries. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Jean-François, authorizing an agreement with St. Paul's United Methodist Church for the city to use their parking lot.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Jean-François, second by Alderman-Kleiner. A discussion. Roll.
Jean-François?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Ram Cassoun?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Massie?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Carries. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Green, authorizing an amendment to the city code to place a handicap parking spot at 156 and a half Linden Avenue.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Green, second by Alderman-Kleiner. A discussion. Roll.
Jean-François?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Ram Cassoun?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Massie?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Carries. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Green, authorizing an amendment to city code to require all retail stores to obtain planning board approval in applicable certain zoning districts without regard to square footage.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Green, second by Alderman-Witt. A discussion. Roll.
Jean-François?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Ram Cassoun?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Massie?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Carries. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Johnson, amending the city code to implement a business permit program.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Johnson, second by Alderman Jean-François. A discussion. Roll.
Jean-François?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Ram Cassoun?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Massie?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Carries. Resolution sponsored by Alderman-Massie, amending the city code to prohibit smoking on the King Street walkway.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman-Massie, second by Alderman-Kleiner. A discussion. Roll.
Jean-François?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Ram Cassoun?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Massie?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Carries. Resolution sponsored by Alderman-Massie, authorizing an updated proposal timeline for the purchase of and development of 11-15 King Street by the Middletown Hotel Incorporated.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman-Massie, second by Alderman Johnson. A discussion. Roll.
Jean-François?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Ram Cassoun?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Massie?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Motion carries. Resolution sponsored by Alderman-Massie, confirming the mayor's appointment of Rosa Tuminia, Tuminia as deputy treasurer.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman-Massie, second by Alderman-Cassoun. A discussion. Roll.
Jean-François?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Ram Cassoun?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Massie?
Aye.
Rodriguez? President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Carries.
Local law?
We have a local law sponsored by Alderman Johnson to increase the term of office of the city treasurer.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Johnson, second by Alderman-Cassoun. A discussion on the local law. Roll.
Jean-François?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Ram Cassoun?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Massie?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Carries.
Audit? Mr. President, I move the accounts be ordered and the claims be adjusted and the city treasurer be authorized to issue warrants for their payment. Resolution sponsored by Alderman-Massie, second by Alderman Johnson. Roll.
Jean-François?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Ram Cassoun?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Massie?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Carries.
Move for adjournment? So moved.